Is September 25. Welcome to our school board meeting. Can I have a motion to return to public session? Motion by Marjorie, second by Bill. All is in favor. Six, six nothing. We ask that you join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We turn to 6.01, Board Announcements. I have a couple of fun ones to start the evening off with. Really exciting news. Our valedictorian has been named. It's Helen Dollar. And our salutatorian has been named, and it is Casey Laff. So congratulations to them and their families. Really, really exciting. And two great girls, and we wish them best. Also, we had a really remarkable, Alex Bond is a violinist, and he has been selected for the All-State Symphony Orchestra. We have not had a John Jay student in that orchestra for 18 years. So huge accomplishment to Alex and his family. So we wish him the best. I think that's in January or in the winter time that he'll go up for that. So that was just some really good things. And then we also had Juliana Field. She's a senior. She's a semifinalist in the 2026 National Merit Scholarship Program. There's just some really fantastic things going along in our district. We also had Board Orientation Leadership last Monday. Two Mondays, yeah. Last Monday, the eighth. I attended that with Barbara and Marjorie gracefully. Great came and spoke and shared all of her wisdom that we get every day and her messages, along with some of our colleagues, was very well received. So thank you for that training. And then we had the regionalization meetings last Wednesday. Ray will talk some more about that. And that's the requirement that we discuss a regionalization plan. I think it's due in 10 years.
The final one.
Final one is due in 10 years. So we've been working with our Bosse's program on that. So some exciting things are coming out of that. And then we had the roundtables discussions with Hudson. I've attended along with Arwin, Marjorie, Ray, and myself. And, you know, we just had some really great conversations there. There were 12 different topics or so that you could go to. And I was fortunate, I attended the social emotional learning. And one really good thing that I learned at that is that belonging and mattering, if you don't have those two elements, the kids can't get to the education part. And that's really become clear in everything that I've been learning about social emotional learning. And we're fortunate that Pillar Two is belonging and Pillar Five is well-being. And I shamelessly plugged our 2030 Plan at the meeting. And people were so impressed. And I just want to thank our community for all the work that they put into, along with Ray and his team, of bringing that together. It was just really, I was very proud to highlight that to our other board members and to see their reaction was really fun. So sorry, I've no, I talked a lot, but there was a lot going on the last two weeks. Does anyone else have Board announcements?
You know, just to double up on that, the roundtable discussion. I was fortunate enough to actually sit with Ray at the first table. And I will tell you a text message I sent to somebody who's in our district. And I said, you know, we are very lucky to have him. He is on the very forefront of what is going on in the education world. And he explained some things that I had no concept of before I entered into there because we were in the civics and education table. And I think I wanted the social emotional learning table. And I was like, I don't want to sit at the civics table, but that's what I got. So but my point is, it was, it was very educational for me. Like, that's what I wanted to talk about. But this was actually probably something I needed to learn about. And Ray was very informative. And we talked all about, you know, the, what a graduate looks like and what's happening in New York State and how he's already started to move our schools along to some of those things. And I was like, wow, I never really thought about that. So I want to thank you for that evening and just say again how lucky we are to have him.
I wanted to thank Dr. Siciliano and Mr. Gizzo and the High School PTO for the First Principal's Coffee of the Year, which was here in the library. It was set up kind of like this, actually, where we all got to sit around in a, you know, rectangular manner and introduce ourselves. And it was really well attended. I want to say there were about 25 people in attendance, including about half a dozen new teachers, several of whom are John Jay graduates, which we had heard from Julia Drake when she did the new teacher training. But it was so nice to put faces with names. And it was just really heartening to hear how grateful people were for the start of the school year. We had opportunity to check in about how the common lunch was working for everybody and how the space was being experienced and to hear a little bit about some programs happening out of the college counseling office, the guidance office, from our new director. And it was just a really great energy. So thank you for that meeting. And then thank you to the administration and all of our teachers at the high school for opening up their classrooms for back-to-school night. I know that we're getting to that point where all of the buildings are going to soon have their back-to-school nights. But we had it at the high school earlier this week. And again, really well attended. So nice to see parents in the hallway. And our teachers were amazing. And it just seems to be a really positive start to the year. So I felt really proud and happy about all that. Thank you.
I'll piggyback on that because this is my first campus night at the high school. And I just have to say, I was really impressed. It was in the evening after a full day of work. And just the level of energy and enthusiasm and just love for the job that every teacher had was just really inspiring. And I really felt like, you know, our kids are in really great hands.
That was lovely. And you probably heard this too, but just because it is such a different year, I think our faculty really feel good about block scheduling. I heard so many spontaneous positives about block scheduling. It was just great. And I have to think that energy spills over for the kids too, who I think are, well, as we know from Hudson, who are enjoying it, I think. But it was just really validating, so.
That and distraction-free, distraction-free learning environment. They were really excited about that.
Hudson, this is an opportunity for you to say something too, if you want.
Oh, yes.
You don't have to.
Yeah, so jumping off those two things. Again, now that we're like further in school, we've had like about, I think, two or three weeks so far. This block scheduling system at the high school, it really is working great. Lots of teachers have been really enthusiastic about it. They're very good at giving breaks in between, making sure like you could just leave whenever you need because people do need breaks. So the teachers have been really accommodating about that aspect. And it's also really working great for classes. I just feel like you can learn so much more in that 80-minute block without having to transition nine times a day. And also the workload at night, it's been really like much easier. So you still have like work for each class, but it's just not having, having like twice as less work or at least classes you have to focus on. It really makes the whole process a lot easier. And then for the distraction-free phones, again, like I was saying at the previous meeting, like students were not really excited about it going into the year. But I really think our, just our student body has really like adopted it and been so positive about it. And something that I've noticed is the lunchroom. It's just everyone's like talking to each other. And like in comparison to last year when people are on their phones during lunch and like playing games and Instagram, Snapchat, it's just, it's really a different lunchroom as a whole. And everyone's just talking. It's loud, it's fun. And I really think that that's all attributed to losing the phones.
Did you find that different kids have like gravitated to different areas of the school for lunches?
Uh, yeah.
Or are they mixing it up?
Um, I, like making use of the other spaces. So there's space in the main hallway to sit. Right outside the libraries, there's space, there's space in the glass hallway. And I do really think that's going to be expanded when the B wing opens up. So I think that that's going to make a big difference because it is crowded in the lunchroom right now. But I really imagine that it's going to settle down a lot when the B wing opens.
That's great.
Makes sense.
Anyone else for board dialogue?
I went to Increase Miller's back-to-school night and just wanted to give kudos to all the teachers there talking about the science of reading, introducing the decodable text to the parents, how they're tied to the phonics skills. I thought they did a great job of presenting that, those positive changes. So very exciting and it was a great night.
Got to talk about the new, new wing? Got to talk about the new wing over there?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
So next we will have our capital project update, please. Joining us.
All right, Mike and team, you guys good? Frank, Rich.
Mike.
Thanks, Sydney. At least to go ahead and just kind of introduce this as we hand this out to the team. So thank you, Lisa.
So thank you. And first of all, I'd like to thank our Director of Phil's Facilities, Mike Lavoy, for being here this evening. From KG&amp;D, Richard Markoff, Principal Architect on the projects. Frank Arturi, who's our onsite project manager, as well as Sydney Barelli, who's also one of our onsite project managers from Triton. And just, so here tonight, we wanted to talk about the progress report of the district additions and alterations since we were here last time in May. So summer and in school districts, a lot of work gets done. And I could tell you, this team did an amazing, amazing job. I mean, there's so much that was accomplished this summer, and it's really exciting. The projects encompass significant improvements in all of our buildings. You'll hear about work that we've done this summer and everywhere. And we'll start and we'll begin with the addition at Increase Miller. And, you know, the school has seen substantial new additions and alterations. We're excited to report that that H wing did open in time for school with three full large kindergarten classrooms. They look beautiful. Could you go to the next slide? This is a picture of the interior of some of those classrooms. So it's just an amazing job. The light in the classrooms, as well as a grand total of seven small group instruction rooms will be incorporated in that H wing of Increase Miller.
And just to confirm, I was with Ms. Burrows today and Ms. Dooley, kindergarten teachers in that wing. And they had said that the parents last night were just raving about the space.
It looks beautiful.
My son commented that he wouldn't mind going back to school now. He's 23.
Yeah, but there's the hallway of also an H wing and as well as the courtyard outside. There's new seating. You can see some corner seating, bench seating as well. So just amazing new space, so. And next slide. And this is just the SGI rooms. There's a couple more SGI rooms that need to be completed. And then once that is done, that building, that project is technically substantially completed right now. But then we will be closing down projects and starting to report, final class reports to state education departments. So that's very exciting.
I'm sorry, Lisa, what SGI means?
Small group instruction.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
That my brain wasn't quite working on the acronym, just thank you.
And while all of this work was going on, that, you know, the bond work, as well as some of the additional work that we already had added to the scope of the bond, Mike's team was going all around the district and doing an amazing job as well. For example, Mike, this was, they painted the cafeteria or the cafetorium in Increase Miller, which it just really just looks beautiful and nice and bright and everything like that with new graphics. And this is, one of our custodians is installing one of the new AC units. So we had to retrofit all of the buildings. How many did you do this on?
100, roughly.
100 of, 150 ultimately we'd done. Mike worked with each principal to focus on the hottest areas of the buildings. They had to put in wall boards in order to fit these window units into the, into the windows, existing windows. And this is all to comply with the heat index law, even though we didn't have too many hot days, but we're ready for those.
Although I did ask a teacher about that, and they said just having, they have used the units a lot because taking the humidity out has been a game changer for them and the ability to provide instruction to kids who are not, you know, concerned about the humidity and them affected. So even though it wasn't the hot that could have been, like just having them and being able to use them is, was the, so thank you. And thank you to your team.
Yeah, we were happy to get that many done in the summer. And really grateful to my staff to put in the effort.
Moving on to John Jay Middle School. We're also seeing exciting progress there. A key safety enhancement is a new vestibule out front, which will be opening after Rosh Hashanah when we come back to school. There's just a couple of things that need to be completed in, within the vestibule itself. And they did an amazing job. Right now, they're also staining the existing block to match. So we'll all match the brick outside, the pin letters on the, you know, visitor sign. I mean, just wonderful details that were added. But just, you know, it's just, it really blends in so nicely, the design, that it looks like it's always been there. But at the same time, to have that now where, where, you know, any visitor is vetted before they enter into our buildings is just so important. So that is for security purposes. So that's exciting. And the Family Consumer Science classrooms, much was modeled after the British Cooking Show. And, and I know the students, we've seen some pictures already of some of the treats and that the students have already made in these, in these rooms with the convection stove tops. And it's just, you know, beautiful space, again, bright spaces. And in the next slide, you'll also see the greenhouse, which they'll be able to, you know, grow some of their own food as well as, you know, environmental science. And other programs can also utilize the greenhouse space there. Anything to add about middle school? There's also, these are renovations to the bathrooms in the middle school. The middle school. And again, and then we're also working on, soon we'll be completing the technology rooms. And again, hopefully that will be something that we will be able to, again, report to the state to finally close out those reports and punch lists at the end of this calendar year. Moving on to the high school. There's a wide range of enhancements that have gone on, designed to modernize the facilities and improve the student and staff experience, beginning with the auditorium seating project, which is progressing well, the installation of new carpeting, new chairs, new seating, new ceiling. And once the fall productions are completed and have taken place, we will go back in for sound as well as lighting improvements and upgrades to that space there.
Will it be ready for spring, spring musicals?
Yes, it'll be ready for spring.
It will be, absolutely. Beautiful, yeah. Not a couple of questions.
And you don't get from the picture, that grid on top is purple.
Yes.
The grid work is painted purple. It's really impressive when you go in, it's neat. There's lots of great purple accents that have been incorporated into the design work. It's been, it's great.
Yeah, there's a little purple, a little bit of purple in the carpeting as well. But just subtle, just subtle. But, you know, as I wear purple. I get a little purple scar there. Yes, it looks, no, it looks beautiful. And this next slide as well renovated the step lab, stepped labs, lab, providing advanced specialized learning for the students. And really again, a great job before, it still had the built-in windows, or not windows, but, you know, into the tabletops for the old days where the computers were built into the tabletop. So it's modern space now with the pop-ups for them in order to plug in their devices right on each of the seating there, so. Looks great. Our front entrance, as people may have noticed, has been undergoing additions and alterations for a little while. During evacuation or excavation, we discovered underground piping in a location for new footing, which required a revised plan resulting in a new start date in September. So we're hopeful that this work will be completed around December time. And then we'll move to the second phase of the front entrance renovations of the high school. This is just an example of unforeseen conditions. If anyone's ever done any household renovations, you know, once you open up a wall, it's like, what's behind the wall? So kind of open up the sidewalk and what's underneath the sidewalk type of thing, so. But yeah, but the team's been diligent in addressing it and try, you know, pivoting and trying to get everything back on course, so thank you for that.
Lisa, if I could just say, we did start that work today.
Okay, great.
We will be pouring concrete tomorrow, so we're posting ahead on the front entrance.
That's great.
That's great.
And next slide, you'll see the beautiful skylights in the B wing. So Hudson, soon you will see the B wing in person. But a little premiere of, these are the skylights and just is beautiful. You know, the lighting and just looking up and being able, like in this, you can see the clouds and everything. It just really is a beautiful space. And in the next slide, you can also see, we're still, there's, there is a delay with the furniture, but, but there is furniture in there, so we can open up. We're hoping to open up the wing possibly next week.
Next week, yeah.
Yes. So it was just a little delay in some glass, which we had, couldn't open it up because it would void, you know, as far as fire safety rules. But what you can see is completely new, everything is new. The restrooms and classroom spaces, open classroom spaces, new learning commons, collaborative workspaces, as well as an outdoor classroom. And again, some more small group instruction rooms that just foster like collaboration and learning and providing flexible study areas. You know, again, during common lunch, there, there is large spaces where the students can then, you know, get together and have another space to have lunch and collaborate, so. And here you'll see work from, again, our operations and maintenance team. In order to accommodate for common lunch, we had to, Mike's team, as well as KG&amp;D and Triton all come together, look at that space. How can we now get all close to 900 people potentially? Like if, you know, if there's ever snow or something, you have to always plan for the, you know, the extreme situations. So how can we possibly get all these students through the cafeteria as efficiently as possible? Mike's team, as well with, you know, KG&amp;D design. Actually, if you see, look on the, yes, this slide, you can see, created a new entrance to the cafeteria and therefore like creating two lines for hot and cold stations and hot and cold lunches and to increase efficiency through the cafeteria. As well as on the next, oh, it's not on that next slide. It's later. But, but there's also the old SRO office space. There is now a remote area where students can pick up prepared meals as well. So, you know, that way, you know, decreasing traffic to the other side of the building. And once B wing opens up, it's a close vicinity to the B wing as well. So that will be, so that is a great spot there. And don't worry, Brett will have a space. He has, he has a good space, so, our SRO. And Mike's team as well renovated the teacher's workspace with new AC ceiling cassettes, as well as HVAC, new flooring, new ceiling. So really revitalizing that space and just making a fresh, clean area for our, our teachers to, you know, to break in and everything else. And you can see this is the interior of that workspace there. New flooring, looks beautiful.
Oh, Tom Rosati's floor layout for furniture too.
Yeah. And this slide, you can see that the operations and maintenance team also performed renovations of lower Q to create updated bright and cheery spaces for our TSP program. A little purple again, little splash of purple, a line of purple. But it is, you know, when we did our tour of that area, it just really, it's just so much brighter and light. And, and you can see the next slide, there's, you know, some, again, some spaces for, for the related services and everyone to meet. As well as you see a couple pictures of our new special education offices, which is in lower K below the district office, allowing the entire district office to be in one wing of the high school. So, and Mike's team did, and again, a great job just creating, it's just amazing how different it looks from when it was like three months ago, two months ago, one month ago, but just.
Our team was surprised too.
Putting up walls and everything to create individualized offices, individual offices and everything, so they did a great job.
And all of that was in addition to all the usual summer work that needs to be done. So, I mean, that was tremendous to get all of that done.
Yeah. It was a big undertaking, but we have the right staff with the right attitude. And I think everybody walked away with a smile. We have little odds and ends to do, but we're getting to them. Working our way back around, trying to pick out little details that we may have missed. But I think, like this next slide, these things, our folks in maintenance, were behind the scenes, setting all that up and doing the plumbing, the HVAC for that hopefully grab and go lunch and learn type of feel for everybody.
It's amazing, it's very much appreciated.
Yeah, it was fun.
There is so much work to accomplish in the summer. To also have accomplished all of these renovations of, you know, cafeteria, TSP space, as well as special education department space is really kudos and thank you.
Air conditioner.
And 90 air conditioners, to name and stop on top of that.
Yeah. Moving the print shop.
And the buildings looking revitalized and beautiful when everyone came back at the beginning of the year, so. Great team, excellent team. And this is Catona Elementary's new renovated library space. Once again, just a bright, cheery space. If you know that, that was, you know, not, not bright and cheery last year. Now it's just a beautiful space. On the next slide also, you can see the stream lab that's connected to that. So just, you know, just to have this central hub of just learning and literacy, as we talk about literacy and a space that, inviting space for our students to want to enter into and, and, you know, it's just beautiful. And this is the above-the-ceiling work for our HVAC system at Catona Elementary School. So it's, you know, there's always work going on even that we don't see. So it was just kind of, you know, we talk about, you know, you see the flashy things, but it's, you know, but there's so much work that goes on above the ceiling, behind the walls, that it's just amazing amount of work has been accomplished this summer. And also, again, more SG, another SGI space in Catona, as well as a new faculty restroom is another. And the next slide, there's another example of what the window units, the retrofitting at Catona's, the window units there. And last spring, our AP Environmental Science classes visited the geothermal wells fields. And by, I think probably by the beginning of June, they had completed 80 wells that were drilled in those fields.
Only got two phone calls about noise.
Yes.
That's it?
That was it?
Wow.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
I thought I changed my phone number.
Well, also thanks to the community for allowing us to disrupt with all of this. But this is a tremendous undertaking.
Yeah.
And also here, you can see the upgrade and replacement of the old boiler to the state-of-the-art Fulton natural gas condensing boilers. And besides the name, you'd have to talk to Mike.
The geothermal plant? Yeah, so you're looking at two Fulton boilers, the expansion tanks and a bunch of miscellaneous piping and pumps on the floor. All that stuff will be packaged up. And the next photo of that room is going to look like something out of NASA. But we're not there yet, we're, we're getting there. So it's all getting put together. And it will be an impressive photo when it's done. Though, I'll be the first one to want to show everybody.
And that reminds me, actually, Lenore is working on some before and after shots on our website because, you know, when you just see the changes side by side, it's just, it's amazing how much they've done. I'm very grateful. So Frank, maybe you can, at this slide before, yes, thank you. Do you want to speak to where we are with the projects and everything?
Sure, just starting at Increase Miller. We do plan on turning over the rear connecting corridor. I believe that's October 24th. So we're making very good progress on the back connecting corridor. So once it's completed, students and staff will be able to go in, in the H wing around to the school. And you know, this first slide, the back was pretty much, it was just dirt. That will all be graded out, there'll be grass, there'll be nice fields there for the students to enjoy recess out there. And we are completing the, actually, next week, we will be installing the transaction windows, which are basically similar to like, I would compare it to like a bank window, where it gives the security person more, more, a secure atmosphere with, with who comes in. And.
Yeah, that reminds me, so the, those vestibules as well after Rosh Hashanah will be opening up as well. So the Increase Miller and Meadow Pond vestibules as well.
So you'll be able to move your security staff into those new spaces right after the holidays. Catona Elementary, we made very good progress. Catona Elementary, we made very good progress, as Lisa showed, that there was quite a bit of work above the ceilings that went on. When you go in and you look at a ceiling, you don't realize the ductwork and the steam pipes and the electrical heaters. So that's why that slide, we felt was important to show that. And just looking, John Jay High School, happy to report that we will be substantially completed in the B Wing next week. There was special fire glass that had to be ordered. And the good news is it is coming in tomorrow and we have our carpenters jumping right on it to get it installed. So we will be able to turn the B Wing over and we will immediately start on the C Wing, which is, which is good news to keep working, going at the high school. And the middle school, we are pretty much substantially completed with all the work. The tech lab, we're happy to report, we will be turning over two months sooner than originally thought. So we're looking to turn the tech labs over in October, third week in October. So progress is going very, very well there.
Thank you. And so in the same, Metal Pond, really the, once the vestibule is completed-
Right.
Then that project will be closing, will be closing that project out.
Right. We just had some miscellaneous punchless items during the summer and some heating and air conditioning issues that we had to resolve. So we're happy to report that we feel like we're pretty much there now.
Thank you. So do you have any questions for the team here?
Just gratitude.
Awesome. This is not an important question at all, but I've done some searching. I'm just curious. It seems to me that Catona could be the first public elementary in Westchester County to have geothermal systems. I don't know if that's a fact. I think Pleasantville High School might have it, but I think it would be really neat if we could sort of know if that's a fact that we're first. I think it would be pretty cool.
Yeah, we can take a look at that. It's an interesting study too, because KES, as you may be aware, is a works public administration building under FDR's term. So a building that was built at that time, being retrofitted with geothermal, seeing a second life, so to speak, taking the new technology from just brick and mortar is an amazing accomplishment. Certainly, if it's the first elementary school in Westchester, that's an even higher accolade.
I'd love to know that if we can.
We will take a look.
Thanks.
Thanks, everybody.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I just want to also thank just the public and the board for the support and the financial support for these projects and everything because it's just great. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much for coming tonight. Exciting to see. Okay.
How did that come to be that we chose KES for that, being that it is our oldest elementary school?
It's because of the nature of the site. I'm sure we could hear more about it from the folks who just got up, but it's really, I think, the site that's most conducive to the drilling.
I thought it might be that.
The energy. I think it also has to-
And the greatest need.
Pardon me, it also has to do with the water. Because our other neighboring elementaries are on well water, but KES, I believe, is municipal water. And so with respect to like disruptiveness potentially to community wells and whatnot, KES was really the only candidate right now.
I knew there was an answer.
We now welcome Terrance and Justin to our board table. We appreciate you being here tonight to talk to us about the EPC. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Well, I think as we go from one to the other, anticipating some pretty good news there to reinforce some good news this evening and stuff. So again, back to Lisa's point before, where just in May, we got the kind of go ahead from the community once again to support us, to follow up on this project, to see if we can actually pull this together and make it happen. And so we'll see tonight. But again, thanks to the community giving us a chance to even be here tonight. So, thank you.
Just want to welcome Terry Gurrie from Honeywell, as well as Justin Benet from Energy, as well as Mike again. And they're going to walk us through that.
He tried, did you see? Sorry, Mike.
Yes, so they're going to walk us through, we do have some exciting proposal from Honeywell. We've, so I will, I'll turn it over to Terry to tell us about it.
Sure. I don't know if you want to, I can jump right into it. And you can fill in and you can flip the slides?
Yes. Or you do, would you like to?
Sure, that works. Too many slides, but yeah, thank you for the opportunity to come back. We've got what we believe is very good news to share. You know, we were selected back in January. You know, we went out, the district went out with an RFP. I think it was last October, November, we had responded. We were selected by yourself in January and then we began a lot of detailed engineering work to get to this point. And it was not an easy process to, to design a self-funded solar system. And that was, that was the criteria, you know, could we, with all that's available in terms of the federal monies through the investment tax credit, through some nice certa monies that come direct to us to buy the cost down, through obviously just pure energy savings by installing solar systems, can all of that and the cost, you know, work under a self-funding format? And yes, we've got a proposal that is self-funding. We believe interest rates are coming down because financing is part of it. So we're self-funding at what we believe is a very conservative rate. We were just talking about it. We've got other projects that were just funded recently that are well under the rate that we're showing. So I think that's all good news, kind of the perfect storm of where rates are going. The feds are lowering the rates. So with that, I will, just by way of introduction, because I think there's maybe a few board members that were not here when I presented in, in January. I head up Honeywell's energy team in New York. Been doing that for 20, 20 years, 20 plus years. And we did a job with the district 10 years ago with Mike. Successful energy performance contract included a lot of the behind the scenes stuff that Lisa was showing, the stuff you don't see, boilers and stuff above the ceiling and all that. Well, yeah, the good stuff, good stuff for us engineers. The nerdy stuff that we like. But great results exceeded the guarantees. So we were excited to get another opportunity. Solar didn't work back then because it didn't have a lot of the stuff that's available now to make it work. And just real brief on Honeywell, so we're very mature in this marketplace. So we've been doing it for about 40 plus years. And we like to just leverage that strength and expertise across all of our projects to, you know, to bring us to where we're at today. And I'll get into the meat and potatoes of our proposal. And these are finalized numbers. So we've got a current sell price of 7.15 million. That's a little bit less than where our RFP response was at last November. That was, and that was before all the detail engineering. And I'll get into the actual solar layouts and the engineering involved. So some systems came down in size because of equipment on roofs, structural analysis that was done, so you can't put panels in certain areas, things like that. But very close to the number that we had proposed before. From a grant perspective, you know, we're over $2.2 million in, I'll call it free money. 1.95 of that is the federal ITC. There's a 300K piece that Honeywell is contributing to the deal and that would be at the very end of the installation. And it really helped to close the gap in the first year of the financing. And the reason being is in New York, you know, when you finance these projects, you've got to begin making payments within 12 months. Our construction schedule here is an 18-month schedule. So you're not going to see the full energy savings while you're starting to make payments. You're going to have some energy savings. Some of the systems will be done, but not all of them. And that federal ITC money doesn't come in, as you're well aware, under the geothermal piece until the work is complete. So that's going to show up in year two. So you have that kind of gap in year one where you've got to make a certain level of payments. Our savings are here. Honeywell closed the gap. So it's a truly self-funding scenario across every year of the term. And like I said, hopefully the interest rates come in even better and it, it only gets further positive. So we're showing through the solar systems, we're proposing annual savings of a little over 318,000 a year. You also get building aid. So EPCs are aidable, like capital projects. Wish your aid ratio was a little bit higher, but it's not. And I know even when we started it-
They were.
They were higher. Correct. So that was also part of the struggle of making it work. Your aid ratio came down. But that is an accurate number and it's, it's nothing to sneeze at. It's over, you know, over a 15-year period, it contributes to the positive cash flow. As you can see there, I'm showing currently with the four and a half percent interest rate, a positive cash flow of, I'll call it, you know, over half a million dollars over the term. So not only self-funding, but actually generating positive cash flow for the district. And I don't like to use too many acronyms. ECM stands for energy conservation measures. This is just, most EPCs are a variety. This is one. It's a solar-only project, but at every location. So I'm going to show you briefly what those layouts look like. Those are the KW sizes of each of the systems. And these are, these are finished designs. And that's where certainly Justin and his team comes in. When I show you the timeline, all of the engineering behind this has been complete. So all the structural analysis on the roof that SED requires, so we're not putting panels in areas that are going to, you know, cave in the roof or, all the electrical drawings have been completed behind that that we have to submit to SED. That was all completed by, by Justin's team. So we're in a position, not deceiving, but asking for your support at the next board meeting with your approval to get the contract signed and submit to SED the following day. And I'll show the timeline of why that's important because we're trying to get, we need to get the material ordered and in-house before the end of the calendar year. Because under the one big beautiful bill, there's a whole slew of other criteria that kicks in. If you don't do that and you start with your material in January under a foreign entity of concern requirements, not that those aren't achievable, but they come with extra costs, costs that we can't incur and keep this self-funding program working. So here's the high school. And again, if you see areas where, why there's no panels there, again, it's either there's equipment on the roof and there's too much shading, so there's just inefficiency, it doesn't make sense, or structurally it wasn't sound, or in the case of the high school, there's some roof areas that-
Need some roof.
Needs some work. Yeah. I'm not looking to give Mike some more work. But there's a little bit at the high school.
Yeah, I think we're careful, but we still, at the same time, we picked out the appropriate places not to put-
No doubt. While trying to still maximize it within code requirements, because that certainly helps, again, achieve the self-funding scenario. You can see a similar layout, very large systems, obviously, at the high school and the middle school. So I wanted to point out here, this is, you may see what appears to be some floating panels there in the kind of lower left-hand corner. That is the addition.
That's the H Wing.
Yeah, this is an older Google Earth shot that wasn't up to date. So I wanted to show you there. We didn't, because I know with the capital work that that was a consideration and maybe a change order. And I had reviewed those drawings and said it really would make sense to, to pull it into this job. Even the way we're connecting it to the grid, we're maximizing the return to the district. So, yeah, I'm glad that we were able to make it work because it'd be a shame not to say no to that and have us fail as well. So that's what those floating panels are. Well, color it purple, how about that? Well, some will look at it and say, is that a ground mount system? No, that's, that's the new addition. Smaller system here, and a lot of this is just the size of the roof at Catona Elementary. There's a lot of equipment up there. There's a lot of shading. But we didn't want to leave any building out. We thought that was, say, there's an opportunity here. It still has good payback. I think it, it's a good message to the public that every available viable space was used to maximize the measure.
Center section of roof is slate, which-
Good point.
I plan on replacing. And you can't replace a slate roof easily already, let alone put panels on it.
Very expensive. Yeah. That would have crushed the payback. Good point. And here, this is a ground mount system. So this, I believe, was an older soccer field. Really good location. Justin's team did all the required geotechnical work. So we know the soil type, what's, what's subsurface. All that goes into designing the, the racking support for those panels because they got to meet certain wind requirements and all of that. But a really good spot that I, obviously not currently used today, that we wanted to take advantage of.
And those green blobs is screening?
Those, those blobs there, for lack of a better word, technical word. It's, it's just part of the software we use. It's, it's to define like heights of trees, to calculate our shading. It's nothing more than that. That's not-
Okay. I didn't know if we were required to put in, plant some screening. I know where I grew up, there's a lot of solar farms and they're required to put different screening around.
There is some fencing there that is required. We do have that, correct. That's not what those, those are just indicating trees are there. And then there's some numbers behind that to indicate heights of trees to determine the shading and the effect. There's some light trimming in this area that we had talked about. But yeah, fencing will be part of it. It definitely needs to be a, a secure area with proper signage and all of that.
Thank you.
And last but not least is Metal Pond, also a very good-sized system. In total, it equates to about 2.1 megawatts. It probably, I meant to have the exact number. It probably addresses 55% of your electrical load. So in the future, if you buy some property and you want to come back to Honeywell, we want to put another ground mount somewhere. I know there was a question back in January, like, can we wipe out our entire electrical spend? No, but it's significant. It, it might be an area of 55 to 60% of your current electrical spend. With a significant environmental impact in terms of greenhouse gas reduction, which I can show you that. And we can make that part of our, our M and V on the backend of the install, you know, every year then we're responsible. That's the, the key here of a, of an energy performance contract is it's a real guarantee. So we're physically measuring the production of each system, which leads directly to the, the monetary credit and reduction in your bills. And if that production is not what we are contractually showing, then Honeywell will cut a check for the difference. So you're absolutely protected under that self-funding. Ideally and consistently, we probably average 95% of exceeding those numbers because as much as I would like to push the envelope on that, I've got Big Bad Honeywell saying you could only guarantee X of, if I'm calculating 100 bucks, they, we want you to guarantee $90, keep a little safety. But we don't share in that overage. So the reality is we, we usually exceed the guaranteed numbers and that all goes to, to the district. So again, so the cash flow that I presented truly represents the worst case. The savings should be greater because I'm not guaranteeing 100% of what I calculated. The interest rate should be better. And the annual service where we measure the production and do that guarantee, we're showing that there's an annual cost for that, call it, it's in the cash flow, so it's not a hidden fee. Maybe it's eight or $9,000 a year. Like Phase One, where we showed a consistent exceeding of the results about four or five years in a row, you can cancel that service then, which I would say that's probably a good move, that this is an engineered solution. If there's a mistake, it's going to rear itself early and then we've got the ability to fix it on our dime. But if not, if you have consistent results, especially with a single measure like solar and the production is there, so you could opt to just cancel that annual service of us measuring all that and that's additional upside to the district. Those costs then go away.
But that's already measured in though, right? Even if we kept that cost, that's still measured in.
Even if we kept that cost, that's still measured in.
100% measured in for the full 18-year term. You got it.
18 years is how long you expect the panels to last?
No, so 18 years by Energy Law New York is the simple payback that the State Department requires. So they want to see a guarantee for the full 18 years. District's choice then to keep that guarantee in place, which comes with an annual cost just to monitor all of the utility spend, or not. But the starting point needs to be for a full 18 years, so you're protected. Thought process, I'm sure, being that, again, if there's a shortfall in year one, keep that service because you're protected. I would have to cut a check every year for the full 18 years to make sure that you're made whole in the cash flow that you're looking at. So you've got enough savings in your utility spend to make that debt payment to the backend because you're going out and borrowing money, and those monies, like a capital project, like a bond, those monies get put into an escrow, and then we pull from that like every ordinary construction project. And then when the construction is done, you begin making those payments back, and that's where you got to see the reduction in your utility spend to offset the debt spend. And the other money's coming in from the federal government and all of that, so.
And I don't know, maybe it's already calculated in here, but does the geothermal plant have any, like, will that help us at all with having that in, or are those numbers already considered?
We can't really say that they tie together. They're kind of stovepipe.
Okay.
What we would want to do is we want to let, when that project finish out, close out, all the engineering data about that building and structure, we will share with Honeywell. But the solar project in and of itself is kind of independent of the geothermal system. And I think in the end, that's where the district and Honeywell need to partner and talk about, on the tail end of the project, what we do with the green energy credits that we purchase, how many we should still be purchasing, and the overall GHG impact and how it relates to that building. I think that's going to take some time to go from stovepipe to combined, but I think that's in the future.
Okay, thanks. I didn't understand how they, you know, if they were completely separate, if there was some interplay, so thank you.
Yeah.
But as we, you know, move towards increased electrification of our bus fleet and some of the other items we're doing, that increases our demand on electricity and then, but now we're using green electricity, increasing that, so that's, you know, for me too. So there is, you know, bottom line, there is, you know, at the end, some money, profit, if you will, or revenue that's being generated, but to me, like, the environmental savings is also really impactful.
Yeah.
No doubt. And we can help with that. Like I said, part of that annual service to monitor the system and to protect the guarantee is to produce an annual report. And part of that report can be specifics on the environmental impact, which a lot of our clients, we work with Energy, and whether it's in addition to your website to get it out to the public, whether it's a public meeting like this, you know, to present the results like we did under Phase 1. So all things that we'd love to do and expect to do, so, you know, take advantage of that.
I think we're doing dashboard data too, so like, students can see productivity.
Correct. I mean, I like the slide where you had students out with the geothermal. We can do that, you know, get them involved as instruction with safety in mind is going on, but also, to your point, on the backend.
On the backend, yeah.
We've got access now remotely to show the production via dashboard, so that can be pulled in anywhere. Work in a STEM classroom, can pull it up on a screen, Smartboard, and field questions. We had that conversation with one of the students. It was pretty, I forget her name, pretty impactful.
Yeah. Yeah. You did a great job. We did a meeting.
Does Nomi that she spoke with or no?
No.
There was a student who wrote us, I think, last year.
Amelia Ingles.
Amelia.
Yes.
She's great.
She did a project on it.
It was good. Handed myself and Justin about 30 questions, so really, really appreciated that extra homework.
You did. I was like, dude, you better do your homework.
Hey, could be a future hire.
It brought me back to my college days. I'm like, wow, I thought I knew this stuff. I got to go study.
She may hit you up for an internship soon. She's a senior this year.
Yeah. Very impressive.
And we do some of that too. I like that way, if you have like, I'm sure you have college days here at high school, and sometimes you maybe invite STEM companies in. We've done a lot of that, you know, just talking about, hey, what does an engineering job look like? I'm thinking about going to an engineering school. So if you have something like that, I live close by, I'd love to, you know, be part of that because that's.
We definitely do.
Those are good discussions to have. My kids included thinking about, you know, years back, going to engineering school. They have a lot of good questions around, what would I do? What does a job look like? You know, so take advantage of that. You know, certainly, we've done that together.
I just wanted to say a huge thanks to Lisa for getting us to yes and working with our partners to get this done. It was unclear whether we were going to be able to do it, and I think that this is a really important project for us. You know, I follow Energy News pretty closely, and there's just a lot of coverage around the rising electricity demand with data centers and AI and how that's expected to, you know, drive up the price of electricity. And so from the perspective of, you know, the fiscal responsibility that we have, having this in place and being able to generate, you know, 50% to 60% of our electricity needs on-site, I think is a huge advantage to us. So I think that this is a really important project, and thank you, Lisa, for getting us here.
Agreed. Yeah, it's going to look a lot different in the future, so you having it on-site. Even the numbers we're showing, you know, if we're showing, what, a 2% escalation year over year? I anticipated those costs to go up a lot higher than that. So again, getting back to that cash flow is conservative because think of it, if you didn't do it, where the costs would be? That's, you know, I concur with you 100%, so.
One of the reasons to pursue this idea is it allows you, empowers you, to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and fossil fuels through electric energy because you have a way to back it up. It's much harder before when you did, even buying the green energy credits, the electric bill was still going up. So this is a really good offset.
Yeah, and the buckets we're pulling from are going away. So like, there's an Iserda piece that we get 25 cents a watt that comes to us, the contractor, so that helps to buy down the cost. That's a bucket of money that you can go online and you could see it's dwindling real time. We're protect, well, there's enough room, then I think we're fine, given the timeline that I'll show, but the federal monies are going away. You know, the new administration put in some accelerated closeouts of that Inflation Reduction Act. Like I said, there's criteria kicking in next year that makes it a little more expensive and more prohibitive, so less will be done. So that may change if the administration changes the next, but plan on it not changing. So again, your perfect storm of having like free monies is, there's small windows, so. This was the environmental impact. You can see significant, you know, over 2,200 tons of CO2 reduction, and this is based on our guaranteed numbers. We would, again, do an actual calculation here when the results are in at the end of the year.
So if you don't mind, if you can go back to that slide for a second.
Sure.
That's like 5 million pounds, the first number. That's a metric ton, so US, it's like 2,200 pounds per ton. Five million pounds of less CO2 that this community is putting into the environment, so.
Significant.
Sustainability piece and where we're at. I think, you know, yes, absolutely want to save our community money, and we're holding tight there, and the worst, it's a wash, and we're obviously seeing it's a lot better, but on an annual basis, unbelievable. So I, again, thanks, Lisa, and the team, and everybody in the district and the community line, always to make this happen because, you know, it is truly a win-win from a financial standpoint, as well as from an impact on our local community and stuff. So just wanted to, I like doing, it's not the other ones that, you know, aren't important as well too.
No, good point.
But, you know, the 40,000 pounds of sulfur oxides and stuff like that, it's just unbelievable numbers, in my opinion, so thank you.
No, thank you for the pause. I see these numbers a lot in our jobs, so I just, I just treat it like, yeah, it's 2,200. I'm like, you're right, 2,200, that's when you, yeah, when you convert it into pounds, it's, yeah. Significant.
Yes.
No doubt.
Thank you.
And then just from a timeline perspective, so this is, this is really our ask from the district side of what we need in the way of support. It is looking at the next board meeting. We will have, I have a current contract in place with Lisa and outside counsel. We talked about, I'm going to redo that quickly with some recent terms and conditions that I just finished on another project with Ingerman Smith. So I think I can quickly do that, and that process should be very fast, and that should be an approved contract from them in time for that meeting. That's what we need to have done.
The board to approve.
For the board to approve, yeah. Yep. And then we will work, we're working now with Energy on finalizing all of the State Department drawings. We'll begin to put forms in place that requires Dr. Blanch's signature or President's signature so that we can submit to the State Department the next day. So we're looking to submit October 10. Good news is the backlog up there is very small right now. This is a single-only measure, so they should pick it up in about two weeks. They should review it very quickly. We anticipate getting approval by mid-November. We would work with district's fiscal advisor, who's been involved. Capital markets are ready. They would have an RFP prepared so they could release it once we get SED approval, get the rates in, be better than what we're forecasting now, select a bank, and then come back to the board at your December meeting, because that would be enough time to have the bank selected, have the bank lease documents in place and vetted out by your outside counsel for the board then to pass a resolution saying, yes, authorizing the district to execute that lease with the selected bank. And we're off to the races. We'll probably order materials sooner with your support of a signed contract. That's our risk. If we never get, if we never get SED approval, I'm stuck with a whole lot of material, whatever. That will never happen, and I'm confident the rates will be better, but that's, you know, with a signed contract on October 9, we may elect to do that to safe harbor the material and get it in-house before the end of the calendar year, which is, what I mentioned before, very important. But that's our choice, not a concern on the district's side.
I did think we did see finally an acceleration of the nice approval timelines from where we were at the worst of it, right?
Absolutely, yes, yeah.
Oh, did they present something in the way of?
No, well, when we started our capital projects, we were racing to get approval because back then they were like six months.
Oh, from SED.
SED projects, yes.
Oh, yeah.
So two years ago, or a year and a half ago, yes.
Big change there.
Yeah, it was pretty bad.
Unheard of. I mean, I'm sure we all know the years when it would spend a year, year and a half, so this is, this is a good thing.
Yes.
Yeah. And then from a construction standpoint, we've got an 18-month schedule, so we will be complete by June of 2027, and then support the district through the filing of the ITC. I mean, there's some technical information you'll need from us to fill out forms, but then the guarantee would start in your '27, '28 fiscal year.
And the installation is, because you're on the roofs, it's not dependent on students being out of school? This isn't go on during the school year?
100%.
So we're not waiting for breaks or?
There's strategic things about getting, and Mike and I have talked about it, getting material on roofs, certainly super early in the morning.
Some tiptoeing through the tulips.
Correct. No doubt. No doubt. No doubt. But not some are dependent. You'd never meet this schedule. Yeah.
Yeah.
Certainly tightly coordinated in that, and that's, you know, the exciting part for us when we finalize numbers, we talked about it. Having worked with Mike and the team before gave us a confidence level to really just tighten up our numbers and slim down margins to make it work because we've worked with the team before, and we're not going to have efficiency losses because of poor communication and things like that, which happens quite a bit. You know, there's good teams, there's bad teams, but yeah, so.
And then there's our team.
Yeah. Great point. Excellent teams.
Our staff. I'll meet you at the parking lot after. The custodians and maintenance team have learned a lot through this bond, how to support these types of services, especially heavy lifts and loads quietly so we don't disrupt school.
Having separate entrance ways and exit ways, so we're not, yeah, coming into the building at all whatsoever and loading stuff on the roof at early hours or even after-school hours. So any of that lift work or.
Yeah.
Having a crane, I don't think we'll need that, but yeah. That would not be during occupied hours whatsoever, but the systems are ballasted systems, which you're not, you know, drilling into the roof, so it's a quiet install. It's not, you're not going to get the calls, or the two calls you got on the geothermal system, you're not going to, you shouldn't get that.
Actually, yeah. Good point.
Yeah, it's a quiet install. You'd be amazed at, a lot of districts say, can't do any work when kids are here, and then they speak to some of their peers that we've done work, and like, yeah, it's, you don't know they're up there for that type of work. For other type of work, it's a lot more intrusive, but not this type of work, so. So we're excited. That is, that's everything in its entirety. If you have any more questions, fire away. Otherwise, we will be prepared with an approved contract for the next meeting. So we got to work that through, Ingerman Smith. We'll have that ready to go.
Thank you.
Thank you for perseverance. We appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Good to see you, Justin.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Yes. You can leave this time.
I do like all the purple, too. Daughter would love it.
Thank you.
Great. I'm really happy that Lisa, that they were able to persevere and come back with a great, great presentation, so it's exciting.
Exciting, absolutely.
Next, we turn to 7.04, our Board of Education goals. Everybody's had a opportunity to review them. Is there any discussion of our three goals? So we have a goal on leadership, a goal on supporting the 2030 Plan, and a goal for fiscal stewardship. I don't know if it needs me to read them, or if anybody's comments, or if we're ready to have a motion on the goals.
I'm happy to move 7.04.
Thank you. Second, second, Carolyn. All those in favor? 6-0. Thank you, Marjorie. Next is our Finance Committee charge. I don't think we had any changes from that from the last meeting. Is there any discussion on the Finance Committee charge? I'd like to make a motion to approve 7.06, adoption of Finance. Second by Bill. Second by Bill. No, I'm sorry, I should have let you make the motion.
No, don't bother.
All those in favor? 6-0. Okay, so next we have a resolution regarding transportation appeal. So I'll just read this. Whereas the Board of Education received an appeal from certain residents detailed in a confidential sheet concerning transportation for the children, whereas the Board of Education has thoroughly reviewed and considered appeal, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby denies the appeal in its entirety. I think we need a motion to accept that language. Motion by Bill, second. Second by Barbara. All those in favor? 6-0.
I'm going to abstain.
You're going to abstain? I'm sorry.
It's okay.
5-0, one abstention. Motion by Bill, second. Second by Barbara. All those in favor? Six zero.
I'm going to abstain.
You're going to abstain, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Five zero, one abstention. That brings us to public comment. There is no one here for our public comment this evening and, you know, once again, we, we do love hearing from our community. You can reach out to us in a variety of ways and one good opportunity is to come join us at our meetings, but our email addresses are on the district website. So we, we do encourage, we like to hear the good and anything that we can help improve on. So we do encourage you to show up and let us know how you're feeling. With that, I will close public comment. That brings us to the consent agenda. Is there anything that we need to pull out from the consent agenda? Can I make a motion to approve the consent agenda? Second by Arwin. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda items? All those in favor? That brings us to board dialogue and discussion. Does anybody have anything to discuss, Hudson?
Um, I actually do. I just wanted like to add on about the presentation that was just given to us. I really think that that's going to be well-received by students. There's a large focus on sustainability in the high school and I know when I was at the middle school, there was also. So I do think this can be very well-received by them and it's really exciting. I do wonder how we can push this out and make this more known, this project known if it gets approved. And I am hoping that there's a way that we could, uh, I forgot the word, make this like just known to students in the high school and also in the younger grades that 55 to 60%, I mean, that, those are very like, very impressive numbers. I do hope that students will know that the district is focused on sustainability and that they'll know these aspects.
So I just want to add, thank you, Hudson, for saying that. We did actually write into the RFP that we are requesting that Honeywell as well as Energia incorporate some data for curricular purposes, a dashboard on the website, you know, and we've done some work with Start in pulling down data into that, into the Start platform and looking at our energy use so we can also incorporate it there. But we did write that into the RFP because it is important for, for any of this type of work to incorporate our students, so thank you.
That's great, thank you. And maybe even potentially that display can be put up in the high school on a monitor permanently, so it could just be displayed to everyone always. And I don't know, maybe that could be a potential down the line.
Yeah, that's great. We've got a lot of TVs that can put it on. No, I think it's exciting that our students, I mean, this is what's going to be coming as you guys are going into college and graduating. So there's some real opportunity for some hand-on, hands-on work in the field for the students that are interested in this. And the fact that they're willing to come to our career day. We do have the career days and that's, it's a great partnership that they're offering to us. And I guess they, and they've always been a very good partnership, right, Mike?
Nice to have them back.
Anything else for a public comment? I do, a wise colleague reminded me recently and I just want to say a thank you to all the boards and administrators that came before us. We wouldn't be here in the position that we are today with being able to have the EPCs and able to have the, the projects that are going on in our schools without the boards that came before us. So the literacy review, the security, vestibules, you know, all that goes along with that. So just a thank you to everybody who sat at this table before us. Then if there's no more board dialogue, it will turn to future meetings. On October 9th, we will be here in the library at 7:00 PM. And on October 23rd, we have our next meeting in the high school library at 7:00 PM. And, Ray.
Yeah, I'll just pick up from the regionalization conversation that happened. So again, you may recall last year, that was a conversation across the state. And in a lot of ways, the, I would say that our BOSI's affiliation, NPW BOSI's is exemplar across the state. And so really for us, there were a few buckets that were identified that yes, we'll be looking at that continued partnership in those. So one of those is the idea about safety and security in schools to see if there's a way to have those expenditures be funded perhaps either outside the cap or some ability from State Aid to support that. So certainly want to be a part of that. Continuing to look at our, our mental wellness kind of partnerships. As the board knows, we've started dabbling into that a little bit with Northwell Health this year, just as the presentation last time. And then thinking other things like an operational part for transportation. As we think about transportation in our area and then other districts, we try to help from district to district, directors to directors to say, hey, if I happen to be going through your district with a child, maybe we can help each other and things. So BOSI's is looking to see if there's kind of a more centralized space just within BOSI's. And so they're doing some exploration to see if that's something that can help all these component districts and perhaps broader. But it's not just 18, we'll head down county all the way and things like that. So yes, we would like to kind of be a part of that work as well. So the regionalization conversation, as much of that is just where are some of these focus areas you want to work on? I think it will give some direction to our legislators and say, here's a, an agreed-upon focus within this area and so what things might the legislation be able to support in putting some of these things kind of into practice in those areas. So those are the ones. And the last one I would say is just the idea about, I think they call it a staffing hub for substitutes. And so, you know, if we're able to do the same thing in access and say, oh, another district right next door may have a teacher or a person that's just retired is available and they don't need them, but we could. And so this idea about just generating that staffing hub that we can be able to share supports across the way. So once again, a nice regionalization support, so.
And being able to get aid on that.
Right, to try and get into those pieces again, because any services kind of work through BOSI's provides us, you know, the shared services with a little bit aid back on those funds we'd expend in that regard, so.
Thank you. With that, does somebody want to make a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Barbara, second? A second? All those in favor? Six zero. Thank you.
Somebody wants a second.